Good evening, I'd like to call the city, the Masti City Council work session. Today is Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, 7:00 p.m. Work session items. Public comments on work session related items, do we have any public that would like to comment on work related or work session items? I don't see anybody. I think we'll go right into the SafeBuild presentation first. And if the representatives would like to come.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Glenn Lindsay. We all have a business card there from me. I am the Midwest Director of Operations for SafeBuild. I'm actually located down, downstate in Athens, Michigan, which is where one of our hub offices is located. That's actually the office that services the permit paperwork for the city of Masti. And I brought with me-
I'm Kelly Lindsay and I'm your account manager for, for Michigan, the entire state. And I'd like to introduce to you Matt Schneider. He is your mechanical inspector. He's also your rental inspector.
Could you repeat his name, please?
Matt Schneider.
Yeah, okay. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you also, thanks.
So Bill asked us to come and speak to you and just have an opportunity to share some data with you regarding the rental program. And we gave, I gave you copies of a couple of reports that we were able to run. One showing the number of certificates that have been issued. It shows you the certificate date, the address of the property, the owner and the owner's phone number. And it looks, there's 60 of them on there, but you'll notice as you go through the property addresses, there's some that are multiple units. So my, I didn't go through and add up all the multiple units. Yes, there's probably closer to 80 that have received a certificate. And this is year to date, January 1st to today, I ran that report. And then the, another report that you have is a copy of the rental inspections that have been done so far, January 1st through November 22nd. There's 131 line items, but again, some of those are multi-units. And that shows you the permit number, the type of inspection, property address, inspection date, the result of the inspection, and then result of the inspection. As you see, early on, starting in January, most of those were felted by Stephen Haugen. He's the former rental inspector. He has since been replaced with Matt. He's taken over the rental inspections, and I know that's not new news to all of you. And then I also gave you a jurisdiction building performance report. It's a little more difficult to read because there's a lot of information that I had to condense out of that sheet, but that shows you all of the permits that have been issued for the city year to date, starting January 1st. There's been a total of 318 permits. And what, what that is, is that are your building permits, electrical, mechanical permits. So 318 to date, and there's some, there's a breakdown in there based on whether they're residential or commercial, whether they're new construction or alteration, there's some miscellaneous. So there's a lot of data on there for you to pour through. We didn't do a PowerPoint presentation because we thought you'd see it on the screen and then be gone and you couldn't refer back to it. So we actually thought, well, we'll just print it out and give it to you so you can take it home, study it. You have both of our business cards. If you have any questions, then feel free to reach out to us. And then at that, I will, I'll open it up to any questions or any comments or concerns that you might have. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have-
I would like to bring up the, the point of the online payments and online permitting. We have an update for you on that.
Oh, that would be great.
Yes, yes.
So I just received confirmation on Monday that that system is fully live. It's been tested by our software provider and it's fully functioning. So there will be a website link that's provided. I will end up getting, getting it to Bill to put on your website. That will take community members that want to go online and apply for a permit. They will click on this link and it will take them right into the system where they can do that. They can also, we just also received confirmation that the online payment portion is also up and running. So they can apply for the permit. Once the fees are assessed, they'll get a notification that the fees, what the fees are due, and then they can go online and make that payment as well. It will streamline the process quite a bit because right now it's kind of a cumbersome process where they have to mail the applications down to our office or bring them in here. Twice a week, our inspector picks them up here, brings them back to the Athens office to get them processed. And that just, either the mail or the delay of the inspector having to come up and pick them up and bring them back causes an unnecessary delay. So we're really pleased to offer the online permitting and payment function.
I have some questions on that. Is it similar to the form that was used before when the, our former building inspector filled it out? How easy is it to use? I mean, do you have an example of it?
I don't have an example because it's on the computer. So you'll actually go online and you'll just fill in your information in the computer. There's, it's the basic information, the property address, your owner information, the type of work that you're going to be doing. You select from a drop-down list.
Okay.
So it's pretty user-friendly.
So we ask for how many fixtures in the bathroom and you're gonna-
Exactly.
Put one, two, or three or one?
Yes.
Okay.
So this will be a link on our website as well?
Yes, we're gonna give you a link to provide on your website so your residents can just go there and click on it and take them right into the system. It's called Community Connect and they actually set up their own little account so they can complete applications and pay for them right, right through their account.
Now, some of these projects will require plan review and also submittal of plans. But if you, for instance, had a resident or contractor who had an emergency furnace replacement, this is, this is exactly going to work well for, or a service replacement. This will be a very quick turnaround time. But there will be projects that require plan review by a building inspector. So we would still need to process plans, printed plans for some projects. So, but it will streamline a good deal, a good portion of the permit activity.
And even the homeowner permits, if you have drawings that say you're building a deck, we require a couple of basic drawings for that deck so we can look at what you're wanting to build before you actually build it. And that's in an effort to identify any possible code issues. It's a lot easier to fix them when they're on paper before you build it than it is after it's built. So if you apply for a permit for a deck, you have the ability to upload drawings right through the online portal and then we can review those. If you have paper copies, then we're still, you know, of course, the old way of doing it, either picking them up or emailing them. Well, actually, you can scan them and email them to us. But if you can scan and email, you can still attach right through the online program. So even the plan review can be expedited as long as they're attached and uploaded into the permit application.
Let's go back to your example on furnaces. If a person needs their furnace replaced, do they not, just the contractor, like you call a company and say, "Come out here and replace my furnace," and I give you a bid? Is their fees already in that amount of money that you're paying the contractor? In other words, I'm, I'm confused as to why you need a contractor to replace your furnace.
You wouldn't necessarily. It, I used that as, as an example. But a homeowner can obtain a homeowner permit to replace their furnace, if that's where you're headed with that, yeah.
Okay.
So same fees, same, same type of fee, same amount.
The permit costs the same whether it's a contractor applying for it or the homeowner.
Yes.
I'm just wondering how many homeowners, homeowners really know they have to do that to apply for a permit to replace a furnace?
There's quite a few that we, that we end up getting a permit for after the fact because they didn't know that they needed a permit to replace a furnace. And, and we don't penalize those homeowners. We, we give them the benefit of the doubt that they didn't know they needed a permit for that. Now contractors, that's a different story. Contractors all know the permit requirements, so.
Okay.
But we, we actually have quite a few homeowners that we have gone into a, a home for an inspection and we can see that there's a brand-new furnace or a brand-new water heater. At that point, we just notify them and let them know that you probably didn't realize this, but you do need a permit to replace that furnace or that water heater. It has to be looked at to make sure it's installed correctly for your safety. So it happens quite a bit, but there is no penalty for that.
Okay. And this is going live this week?
It is live right now.
Having been through this process with you guys before, that's why I handle that question, so.
Sure, thank you.
I, I have a lot of questions on the rentals. So there is a huge disconnect between what we need from you guys and what we're actually getting. So there needed to be 326 rentals or inspections done this year. And the sheet that you just gave me, taking away the re-inspects, there's 119 and it's already the end of November. So I, I'm, I'm not sure what's going on there or why, why we're, I, I know why we're so far behind because we let Mr. Haugen go and go and go for way too long. And then my next question is on the rental certificates. The paper that you just handed me, I just quickly glanced over it and I'm concerned because there was 60 rental certificates given out between January 1st and November 22nd. Well, one of these people on this have been dead for a few years and I sold the house three months before you gave the rental certificate. So I don't know how that's possible.
Okay, which unit would that be?
That would be number 13.
The 238 Fifth Street?
Yes. And I'm also concerned that out of 119 inspections over the year, the chief of police has only been contacted once for a blight issue, which is, I mean, we, we have a blight problem and we've, we've, you know, said those concerns from the get-go. And we're like, "Yeah, we'll work with blight and, you know, help," one call in a year, I mean.
Sure.
And we're not even a quarter of the way through the inspections that needed to be done and there's only a month left. So next year, you're gonna have almost 500 rental inspections that need to be done. So I don't know how that's gonna get, get done, like you're- without sounding horrible, you're not doing us a great service right now.
So if you subtract, I'll speak to that point first. If you subtract the rental re-inspections, you would come up with 119. But if you look in there, like look at line item number 40, for example, 575 Ramsdale Street. There are 16 units there.
Okay.
At that, so you gotta go through and add up all of those multiple units to come up. The number's probably closer, probably over 200 that we've actually done. I don't have an exact number for you. You are right.
The number from 99 is 204, so you're still 100 and something behind that you need to get done.
Correct. And I will, I will agree with you 100%. Steve Haugen was in the position and, and did them longer than what he should have been doing. We are now realizing the gravity of what's happened.
Which is sad because I've been voicing my opinion since March on this problem.
Yes, and a lot of the information has been referred back to SafeBuild about the progress and the process and wanting status reports. And unfortunately, Steve was building those status reports and we now know that all of the information is not completely reliable. So Steve has been completely removed out of the city. He's not doing any inspections in the city any longer. We have Matt filling in. I have a full-time admin person in the Athens office trying to straighten out the mess. And I'll just be perfectly transparent, it is a mess. There were a number of inspections that Mr. Haugen did and he never scheduled re-inspections. There was violations that are, that are documented. And we're going back now, sometimes 30 days, 60 days later to check those violations. They should have been a 10-day re-inspection. We're in the process with my full-time admin staff of trying to get all that straightened out. We're contacting homeowners on a regular basis or landlords on a regular basis, trying to get in to get those re-inspections done. We've also done a number of re-inspections and Matt is, is actually gonna be handling the majority of these at no charge because of the way that it was just mishand, not handled correctly. So in full transparency, we are aware that there's a, there is a problem, there has been a problem for a while and we're working on getting that remedied.
And I will say too, that going back to months when we first heard the concerns from council on the topics, when we approached, you know, Stephen to discuss, his style was to give a wide girth, and too wide, in our opinion. And we, where, where the heart was in the right place for allowing homeowners, especially coming off of 2020 and not having inspections because of restrictions and whatnot, it was really kind of a, a big thing for us to bite off and understand and navigate. And so we understood and it spoke to us in a way that giving homeowners, landlords, et cetera, a wider girth seemed like in the moment may be the right thing to do. But it hasn't done us any favors on progress. And so we realize, we realize that now and are working toward remedying that. As Glenn said, we have dedicated a, one person in our team of five in our Athens hub office to wrangle this program specifically. And that is how these reports were crafted. And that's how this will get back on track with that daily touch point to catch up and to catch up what, what's already been done that hasn't been certified yet. And then also to reach out to those who haven't even been connected.
It's, it's done a huge disservice to the residents too because some of these people that are in horrible living conditions are like, "Yes, please let the rental inspector come in here so these things can get fixed because it's been ongoing for so long." So I think moving forward, we need a better list of what's been done and if it, if it's failed violations, we need to know why. Like it just can't say, "Oh, it didn't pass" or "It's a partial pass" or, and the blight is a huge issue. Like that was the thing that you told us on, like, "Yeah, we're gonna work with you guys to help combat blights." When we were asking about, you know, what you guys do, a lot of your stuff on your checklist coincided with our blight problems. So the chief's phone should be ringing off the hook when you're doing these inspections, like, "Hey, this isn't my area, but this is a blight issue for so-and-so renting it." And I, I'm very disappointed in a whole year he's gotten one phone call about blight.
Yeah, I can also speak on that as well. When I started digging into some of the reports from Stephen regarding properties that didn't pass, I noticed he was actually citing some of the blight conditions that we're really not responsible for. So I don't know if it was his intention just to take care of it so it didn't burden the police department, but it's not something that we're paid for. So I, I wish I would have caught on to that earlier because I would have told him, "Steve, this is not under your purview. You're there to look at the structure. You're not there to look at the blight." You know, the, the tall grass or the litter or the junk vehicles, that's not under our purview. You need to refer that over to the police department.
But also on your checklist is, you know, peeling paint, siding falling down. So that, you know, some of that is under blight.
Sure. It could be covered either way. It could be covered under your rental ordinance or it could be covered under blight. What I'm finding is Steve took that on himself to try to cover all of that. And again, I don't, I'm, I'm speaking for him. I don't know if he was doing it in an effort to relieve some of it from the police department, but going forward, Matt has a clear understanding that if he sees blight, he's supposed to notify the police department. Both Mr. Gamble and the police department. We had a meeting with Mr. Gamble a couple of weeks ago in his office and we, we came to a very clear understanding that we're not gonna do that. We're gonna just notify the appropriate people.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I, again, completely agree with you. It's, there has not been information passed forward. And my only hopes is that he did that in an effort to, to take some of that pressure off the police department. But if that's, we're not compensated for that, so, you know, we're- And, and we found that he was going the extra mile, like she said, the, an extra wide girth. He was giving people way more time than what should have been given. And he was, there's a, there's a point, we wanna work with people. We don't wanna come down and just be the hard-nosed, you know, "You're gonna fix it. You're gonna fix it right now." That's not the way to conduct business. But we also don't wanna give too much of a, and a timeframe for them to make corrections, especially when it's related to life safety.
I, I completely understand that. I just, the amount that's been done and that still needs to be done is very-
It's tremendous amount of load ahead of us. We're actually, I'm actually considering replacing the position with a full-time position just because I know there's so much work that has to be done to get caught up.
One of the concerns I have is this is like a full-time job, but also with everything else in the city that he has to inspect, how is that possible? Got the building-
So he only inspected building. He didn't do plumbing, electrical, or mechanical. He's just the building inspector, building and rental.
So how did he inspect furnaces and all that?
This is-
Well, actually, he is mechanical as well. He's registered as mechanical. He, he wasn't, his primary function wasn't to inspect furnaces and water heaters. Those are supposed to be going to Matt. We also found that since he was going to the site anyway to do a building inspection, he would do the mechanicals. And he's registered to do mechanical inspections, but that shouldn't have been happening. That's why we have a mechanical inspector on staff. So he was doing mechanical, some mechanicals, and then all of the building inspections and should have been doing the rentals. But as, as we know, that, that was not being done to the full capacity.
I mean, is he gonna have time to do all that?
One person can do the building inspections and the rentals. That's feasible. We, as a matter of fact, I have, we have a rental program in the city of Three Rivers and our, we have one rental inspector that does 600 rentals a year. So it is possible.
But Matt is credentialed for mechanical inspections and he's your rental inspector. You have a different building inspector.
Right.
So a, a different credential individual that comes here.
They're both part-time, but I'm considering filling the role with one full-time person that does building and rentals. And then it'd be separate inspector for mechanical, plumbing, and electrical.
Okay, Glenn, you know that you got on 40 and 41, Ramsdale Street, that's Ramsdale Road. Ramsdale Street is down that way and Ramsdale Road is up that way.
Okay, which list are your-
40, 41.
42.
42. Those are apartments up-
Oh, okay, the Ramsdale Street.
Right, that's Ramsdale Road.
Ramsdale Road. So we can make those corrections in the system.
Are we getting this data from BSNA?
No, there's no BSNA here.
I have another question on the permits. So a few months ago, a landlord was in here and he was charged $80 a unit to put in a window air conditioner. Why is that?
Should not have been for a window air conditioner. There's no permit required for a window air conditioner.
Yeah, I'm always-
I have that address.
Positive, he was charged three times for three window units.
Yeah.
In each apartment.
Yeah, that should not be. If you can-
Look into-
Provide me the address, I will absolutely look into that.
Yes, I, I don't know the addresses, but I know the landlord.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a clear list of what we issue permits for and what fees are, so this stuff doesn't happen?
So the list of what requires a permit, that's in the 2015 Building Code, that's the building code that you're currently under, that talks or speaks about what is required, what work requires a permit. And that's statewide. It's not up to each individual local municipality. There's also a list in there that tells you what you don't need a permit for. It's easier to talk about what you don't need a permit for than it is what you do need a permit for. So it's section 105 in the Building Code. And I, of course, I don't have it with me today, but I can certainly forward that section to anybody that wants it. You should have a copy of the code downstairs in the building office so you can look up, you know, what it is it requires. And then as far as a list of fees, the city does have a copy of our fee schedule. We had to provide that to the city council and the finance manager before we even started. It's a, the trade applications, and when I say trade applications, I mean plumbing, mechanical, and electrical. Those are very easy to determine what the fee is because the second page of the application are the fees. You itemize it based on what you're putting in. The building permit applications, those are a little more difficult to calculate. It's based on the use group of the building, the construction type of the building. And then there's a square footage multiplier to come up with a valuation, which is basically a value of the work. Like what is, if you're putting on 100 square foot addition, what's the value of that work? What does it cost to do that? And that's also a chart that was provided by the state or adopted by the state. It's the same exact fee schedule here in the city. So we take the square footage, look up the use group, the construction type, take the multiplier, that creates the valuation of the work. And then there's a chart, a separate chart that you use based on the valuation to determine the permit fee. So it is a set fee schedule. It's not up to the building inspector to adjust that up or down. You know, he goes by the adopted fees that the city adopted.
But to your point, how do we know and how does the layperson understand? We're five days a week, 8 to 4:30, available for questions at our office. So, so via phone, email, et cetera, if anyone had a question, any homeowner, contractor, et cetera, certainly give us a call.
Yeah, I'm happy to walk anybody through that process.
Well, I'm just thinking like normal replacements, like the air conditioning, furnace, all that. That should be kinda a, a list of fees that should be given so everybody knows.
There are a list of fees for that type of work. It's right on the second page of the application.
One of the challenges we had in the past was dealing with things that all of the other municipalities or the townships and the counties did not charge for and we were charging because of how they interpreted that requirement. And I'll give you one example. To replace a window and not interfere with the structure, just basically take one window out and put another one in, you have a fee. No one else in our county charges or says there's a fee requirement. So how does that interpretation of, and, and when we asked the question before, it says, "Well, if it's not in the part like you listed, if it's not in what is not permitted, then we permit it." Right? So, but again, there's some ambiguity within the county. And it makes it very difficult for us to say why we're, and I believe it's a couple hundred dollars, is it not?
It depends on what it is, a roof replacement.
No, a window.
But a window-
A single window.
That should be, the minimum fee is $100. That's a single inspection, $100 permit. So that's what that should be.
So, so those are some of the concerns. And then replacing siding or putting siding on. You can paint your house and you don't need a permit, but yet if you put siding on your house, which is still, in most cases, is considered part of your home, that is a requirement that you have, but not in the other four or five areas in our county.
So it's an interesting place for us to be in, right? So you hire us to know what the codes are and to enforce them as written. And we enforce the Building Code handed to us by the state. The state governs our operations. You'll never find it in writing from the state that that doesn't require a permit. And the last I knew this topic or this matter was in your attorney's hands, is that correct? Because we haven't heard anything since the last, the last discussion surrounding this.
We gave our opinion on it. I specifically drafted the opinion regarding three items. It was roofing replacements, window replacements, and siding replacements. And I gave specific code sections in the Building Code that deal with each one of those three replacements. And so I gave that interpretation that here's the codes that, that preside over those installations. For example, you talk about the siding. There's an entire section in the code book that talks about siding, what you can use for siding, what you can't use for siding, the minimum thickness, the nailing pattern, all of that. There's a whole section of code just to do with siding. So, and same thing with roofing. There's a section of the code that deals just with roofing, whether it's re-roofing or stripping off. There's a, a whole section in the code that deals with that. So like she said, if it's in the code, then that's our, our cue to enforce the code. There's nothing in the section up in front in 105 that says you don't need a permit for siding. You don't need a permit for roofing. You don't need a permit for replacement windows. As a matter of fact, they just adopted a new code fairly recently, the Energy Code, that says all replacement windows have to meet the new Energy Code. So there's code requirements for tho, that type of work and we're just enforcing the code requirements. We, a lot of people are taking the stand, "Well, that could be considered ordinary repair." And ordinary repair doesn't require a permit. I would love it if the state would define ordinary repair. No definition, definition anywhere that says roof replacement, window replacement, and siding is the ordinary repair. I would love it if they would give us some guidance on that, but again, like she said, they won't give you anything in writing.
And if you call three days out of a week, you will get a different answer. And if you call three days out of a week, you will get a different answer every time?
Yeah, if you talk to the, the director of the department, he'll give you one answer. If you call and talk to one of the building inspectors that work for the state, he may give you a different answer. If you call around the state to different communities, because I think the city manager did call a few communities, he said Ludington, the city of Ludington enforces the exact same thing that's being enforced here, permits for roofing, permits for siding, so it's, it's frustrating even for us.
And then, so here's the predicament, so we're responsible to enforce the code, that's what you've hired us to do, right? And then, we, we don't have any say in, in our opinion in what, 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 uh, does or doesn't require a permit, but if we were ever audited as your building department, and found that we didn't in some way follow the code to the letter, now, that's not good. And the state can audit at any time. So, it's a, it's an interesting place to be. I will say that it can get a little sticky, and with these, um, all of these codes, the Energy Code, um, I would say was a good thing, uh, for them to update that. And here is an example that can apply to anyone in your community. Um, let's say you've got an out-of-state contractor bidding jobs in the area, maybe he's not licensed, uh, maybe he's doing some window replacement, and he's not following the Energy Code, and buying the windows that are supposed to be installed, or he's doing an addition and he's not using the R factor of the insulation that he's supposed to. Well, the homeowner doesn't know, the homeowner doesn't know that. So where our team comes in and inspects, we'll make sure that, 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 um, R factor or-
Or U factor.
Or U factor is, is being met. So there, that's another side of it, that is hopefully a good example, um, for you to process, as you think about these topics.
I just find, I, I know a number of people, and I've known a number of people over my lifetime that would ve, can very easily replace a window if they need to, I just find it really a steep amount of money, a hundred dollars a window?
Well, it's not per window, it's a hundred dollars for the inspection, so you can replace ten windows and pay a hundred dollars.
The entire home.
Yes.
Matter.
It's not per item.
Okay. Right.
The, the challenge that we have is a lot of people will only replace one at a time.
Sure.
Sure.
And that's when, well, the window costs me a hundred and fifty-nine dollars, the inspection costs me a hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, that's where it becomes a challenge for, for us.
So-
I see.
If that's the case, I would, I would work with that person, I would say, okay, you can pull a permit, the permit's good for six months, how many do you think you can do in six months? We'll charge you one inspection, you do as many as you can, and when you get them done, we'll come inspect it. So, if it, if they have to do it over time, because maybe they're paying for it as they can, you know, purchase them-
Right.
-out of each paycheck, they're paying a little bit at a time. We don't have to have a separate permit for each one that they put in and close that out, we can keep it open. I've even opened extended permits for up to twelve months, or even eighteen months, if there's, as long as they're making progress, I will give them an extension free of charge. So they could have the time that they needed to replace multiple windows. We, we definitely don't need to issue one and then close it right out if they're continuing to work and it's a progress. They just have to communicate that to us and let us know, here's the plan, we're gonna do ten windows, but it's gonna take us eighteen months to get them done, I will gladly issue a permit for a hundred dollars and give them the eighteen months to do it. I have no problem with that.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
I, I got another question back on the rentals. So, the addresses on this list that failed and have a code violation, like, there's a couple on here, one is from February, but it's not back on the list, so they haven't, nobody's even been back there since February?
So those are the things that my full-time admin staff is working on, she's looking at those, trying to make contact with the homeowners to say, where are you at in the corrections, are you still working on the corrections, are they done? Once she makes contact with them, she'll get their re-inspection schedule and get out there and get that passed.
Okay.
So yeah, those, that's, those are the discrepancies that bother me the most.
So do you get a copy, like, if, if you have somebody, like, if he's out in the field doing rental inspections, and he's got ten that passed and two that didn't pass, do you get a report that say, hey, I've got two that passed, so you can follow up on that, or is it just like, if it gets done, it gets done?
It goes into our system, but there's not an automatic follow-up scheduled.
Okay.
Because the system doesn't know, is it a correction that needs to be done in ten days, or is it siding that needs to be replaced in thirty days?
So what's the follow-up time for it?
So the inspector should be dictating when the re-inspection occurs.
Okay.
On his slip that he, that he, you know, emails to the tenant, or the landlord, I mean, it should tell on there, here's your corrections, you have ten days to make these corrections and call for a re-inspection.
Okay.
So he should be dictating that, and that's what we're finding was not done.
So there is a timeframe-
Absolutely.
But like, and every, everything is different, like if it's a huge-
Absolutely, correct.
They get an, okay.
Only though, as mentioned, we, we, they were being given a, a very wide girth.
And some of them, as you pointed out, February, there's, there's no reason that should go from February without being followed up on.
And I can see working with someone, um, but if there are life safety issues, we, we definitely wanna put a period to that, for the compliance date, so. And that, I think the majority of these lists have been, um, created from Lynn's activity of making those phone calls, that's what she's doing every day, every day.
Especially the certificates issued, I know that there's been quite a few that have been added to that certificates issued, as a result of Lynn, our office gal, researching, getting their inspections scheduled, and then getting the certificates mailed out.
Glenn, can you identify exactly what the difference between a partial pass, a pass, and a failure is?
So, I looked at a couple of the partial passes, and if it was like an apartment, a multi-unit apartment, and one of the units passed, he would mark it as a partial pass, because one passed and one didn't, so it partially passed. And, and that's great, I can understand the concept behind that, however, there should have been a, a re-inspection scheduled for the unit that didn't pass, out ten days, thirty days, whatever, depending on the severity of the correction, and then that, the, the partial pass should have been changed to pass, once that other unit was re-inspected.
But you also have a lot of single families that are partial passes.
I agree.
So I don't, what, you know, I don't know what that, you know, exactly what it, what does that mean?
How does it partial, either passes-
It's, or fails, but, you know, a partial pass, is it because it's something very minor that, that we would like to have it corrected, but not necessarily has to be corrected?
I- That's what she's digging into, why are these partial paths, and why are they not followed up if they haven't been?
I have a question, we have one big housing development that's still not completed yet, it's over, uh, off of Ford Street, it's the Hollander Project, it's called Hillcrest. Now, when Mr. Hagan was, uh, the day that he left, then we had, I think you were probably the new person then, uh, Matt, how difficult has it been for Mr. Snyder to catch up or understand all the complexities of what's going on there?
I think Kirk, Kirk would be taking care of the building end of, at this point, what I am, I'm, I'm a registered building official, I, I retired after thirty years with the state of Michigan, I used to do Manistee County, uh, for the state with the licensing regulatory affairs. Um, I retired, then took this part-time job on with Safe Built, uh, here a year and nine months or so ago. So I, I was brought on as a mechanical inspector, that's HVAC, heating, ventilation, cooling, process piping, but I'm also a registered building official. So that, and with my background in construction, um, that allows me to do rental inspections. So I've been helping Glenn with the rental inspections, as you can see towards the tail end here, uh, I've taken some, some of the responsibilities on it, and I could certainly take on more responsibilities. But, uh, to answer one of your questions about a partial pass, I rode with Steve for a few days, and he might, like, partial pass a home, say, a ground fault receptacle, didn't trip or didn't work, or, or it was installed incorrectly with, you know, uh, who knows, it wasn't grounded properly or something. I think at that way, if he's seen a couple, two, three things, that's what he would do, a partial pass. Why, I, I, I don't know, you can see mine are either fail or pass, right?
I just wanna get back to the Hollander Project, if you don't mind.
Okay, that, that-
Took over right after Steve left.
So is-
That's the-
That's a project that's in construction right now?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be Kirk Briggs.
Yeah.
Kirk Briggs is the interim building inspector that's doing the inspections.
Okay.
I apologize here, I thought we were talking about rentals, uh, I apologize.
Nope, the, the big site you're talking about, that, that, uh, that would go to the building inspector, you're asking how did that transfer from Steve to the new building inspector?
What was his last name?
Yes, yes. All notes should be there from Steve, and Kirk could pick right up on that.
Yeah, the, the schedules, uh, the scheduled inspections are in our software, so we can see which inspections that Steve passed, and then what to do for the next inspection, and those will just be transferred over to Kirk. He'll, he'll maintain the, the, the rest of it.
Is Kirk's last name?
Briggs, B.R.I.G.G.S.
It looks like he did an inspection, a partial pass inspection, just, um-
Yes, the last one on the list that I see. Uh, he also is credentialed to do rental inspections, so if they need an inspection on a day that Steve is not here, because Steve is, or, I'm sorry, Matt, is here on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so if they need a rental inspection that's not on one of those days, Kirk may be asked to go do it. Um, Kirk has also said, since I'm in the city already to do building inspections, I'm gonna drive all the way up there, if I only have one inspection, I have capacity to do a couple rentals, so start putting some rentals on my list. So you'll see Kirk's name on here as well. And Kirk's been in the industry for probably twenty-eight years, he's, he fired, he's a retired firefighter, um, he's very knowledgeable of the Building Code, he's a building inspector, building official as well, uh, so you will see Kirk's name start to appear on here as well.
I got a question about that one that we're talking about, because it's on this list already as fail, so, and then it's back on here as a partial pass, so, I mean, I don't know if it can just be a cut and dry, pass or fail, if you fail, you've got so-and-so many days to correct it, because I think the, the partial pass is giving people way too much free time to, I mean, it completely failed, and, let me find it here again.
There it is.
On-
Nine-three.
Yeah, on nine-three, it completely failed, and then they came back, you came back today, and it, it's a partial pass.
Partial pass, yeah.
It needs to be like a pass or fail, like-
I agree, I don't like the partial pass, it either passed or it didn't pass.
And I think, I, I think moving forward, if we did it to where, like, once a month we got this sheet, and it was pass or fail, but, you know, the ones that failed, they're followed up at the end of the month, or how many days they have, I, I think this would go a lot, lot smoother, if there's, like, more transparency, and I am not a mean person at all, so, you know.
I'll show you here for an instance, like, uh, number, and I did these inspections here, number ninety-four was ten fifteen Vine Street, I met Tom, uh, Amora, Amor, or whatever, I think it was, from Bear Lake, and, and that one failed. So then if you look down on, uh, one twenty, number one twenty-two, then I did a re-inspection, and then passed it. So I, I don't, I'm not gonna do the partial pass-
Yeah.
I guess we can eliminate that right?
Well, the-
Me?
What concern is-
Because if, if, if something partial passed, there's something wrong.
Well, yeah, but one eighty-three, tenth street, I sold that house, I know that house, so the fact that it failed twice, and there's other ones that are either on here or coming up that passed, just totally blows me away, because some of these houses, I don't, I don't think that you got to them yet, they're probably on the next year's cycle, some of them people shouldn't be living in, so I, the fact that that one failed twice is, is a shock to me.
Yeah. Well, that was like even back to ten, to, to Vine Street, you know, Tom lived there, and I know he put tens of thousands of dollars, he redid the whole thing, carpet, you know, painted, upgraded, all the smoke detection, CO detectors, and he did a great job, went back in, did a re-inspection. So again, I did a failed code violation, given the list of the violations, then he called for a re-inspection a little over, um, well, from September twenty-third to November eleventh, and now we have passed it, and then we move forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
I completely agree that there shouldn't be a partial pass, and it sounds like you have it right from Matt's mouth, he does, he's not gonna do the partial pass, it's either gonna pass or fail, and if it fails, then he's gonna give them the amount of time that they need to correct the violations, and get back out there and re-inspect it.
Now, i- if you have homes that aren't even certified as a rental, do people contact you for those, or?
Yes, they would contact the Athens office and let us know we have an unregistered rental.
Okay.
If somebody is not, uh, savvy enough to work on the computer, or they need help, can they come in and can they talk to, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I think, is the days that, um, that man is working?
I do, I do Mondays and Thursdays, I'm, I'm open, I was gonna talk to Glenn, I'm open for more days to help with this backlog.
Can they get help from you to fill out their building permit, or whatever they're trying to do online, because I know there's a lot of people that get frustrated with that.
I myself have not, Glenn would have more information on that if-
Yeah, so-
If someone in the office.
So Matt is here, and I, okay, told you Tuesdays and Thurs, Matt's here on Mondays and Thursdays, Kirk is here on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay.
So either one of them could help somebody with a, with an application question or process, but I would actually encourage them to call the Athens office, I have five full-time admin staff-
Okay.
-that will answer the phone and walk somebody through the process, because the application, if you haven't filled them out before, it can be confusing, uh, you know, there's stuff on there that, that you have to put down, and maybe the people aren't familiar with it. My admin staff are great to answer the, the call, uh, you actually get a live person when you call down there, and then they can ask any questions that they have.
Okay.
So the, if we need to have an inspector meet with a person, we absolutely can do that, like, by appointment. If somebody calls and said, I have to meet the inspector and go over something with him, we just call the inspector and say, hey, can you meet somebody at City Hall Monday at two o'clock? And we find out their availability, and we make that happen.
Any other questions before we move on to Molly?
You all have our cards, I, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm the Midwest Director of Operations, but I will take your call anytime to discuss issues that you're having. I, what, I want to know about the issues. If you hear of something pop up, call me directly and let me know what's going on, I have my computer with me at all times, as a matter of fact, it's right in that bag, I can pull up any address, no matter where I'm at, and look at the details to find out what, what's happened there. Our system is, is great at tracking every single step, it tracks the date and time, anything is done in the system, so I, I have great detail that I can dig into and research. And, you know, claims like the, the window shaker, eighty dollars per window, stuff like that, I wanna know about that, because if, if somebody was indeed charged eighty dollars per window for putting window shakers in, that's absurd, and, and I will handle that.
Portable heating and cooling equipment are exempt from the code.
That's right, they're specifically listed in that section that I talked about, they're exempt from the code.
I, I apologize for being harsh, I'm just-
Not at all.
Angry about how long this has gone on-
No apology needed.
-that we're in, I mean, it, it shouldn't-
We, we apologize, Councilwoman, we apologize for what you've had to bring to us.
Right.
Um, it's, it's up to us to make this right, and accept our apology, and please don't apologize, I, we appreciate your patience in this, and I feel that we have a handle on it, finally. Um, it's just trudging through the massive amounts of data to get where we need to be, but we are totally committed to that. So thank you so much for your time tonight, for your questions, for the candor. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming forward tonight, we appreciate it very much. You might wanna stay and listen to Molly, I think she's gonna touch on some of this too, a little bit.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Evening.
I was talking to the mayor the other day, and she did not know, when we use, when you use the state of Michigan, um, how I got my permits from the state was on an Excel spreadsheet. I had to search four-nine-six-six-oh, and I got every permit listed that had a four-nine-six-six-oh zip code. I then had to sort them, I had to go look for streets, and all I got was a street address and an owner's name, and the permit number. I did not know what they were doing, I did not know if it was interior, exterior, an addition- addition, a deck, foundation repair, anything. I get a monthly, a weekly email from SafeBilt with all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and building permits that they have issued. And when we first started, we had a little rough go how they were doing the numbering and what they were providing me on the building permits that I was receiving. I called SafeBilt and said, this is what I want to see on my permits. They said, no problem, and from that point forward, everything that I need listed on the building permit is there. I get my building permits weekly. If I have need of a plan for an addition, to see what it is, I have a website that I log into, I pull that permit up, I have the plans that are on a PDF that I can download them. For me, safe, this system we are now using is phenomenal. It is, it's just really great, and I have nothing but good to say about this system as far as your assessing department is concerned. Now, roofing, windows, siding is normal maintenance and repair, so your assess side may go up, but your taxable value won't go up because it's normal maintenance and repairs for me. But when I'm seeing those permits, I am looking at those houses, looking at the neighborhoods, and verifying what's there. We're going to do three hundred and eighteen permits, we've already started it, and it just is a very good system as far as I'm concerned, and the state system, sorry, is not good. You can't foil you the information. I've attempted to foil, foil you the information multiple times, and they're not foible, so they, they don't respond. So you get nothing but an address and a permit number. And so as your assessor, I'm pretty happy with our current system, because I get my permits, I can look at building plans, and my permits are timely. That's all I have.
Wow.
Thank you.
Good insight, we needed to hear that. Thank you, Molly. Any, oh, I should have kept her out there. Anybody have any questions for? You're afraid to talk. Okay. Well, is there anything else you can think of that you want to know tonight, the system?
I do want to follow up with George to see if he found anything out with the codes and what we have to enforce, so.
I can pass it along?
That's a good idea. Put it on Bill's job to get in touch with George.
Yeah, when he sees us.
So. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.